Good evening. Call to order, meeting of April 29th, 2009. All members are present, Trish. This being the first meeting after the election of new people, we say goodbye to Mrs. Cushing and Mrs. Peterson, and we say hello to Mr. Marchesi and Mr. Veil. We're glad to have you. And what we do is we reorganize at this meeting. Reorganization means that we choose a chair, a vice chair, and secretary for the school committee. The way that we do it is for chair, Mr. Higgins will conduct that one. The first time around, in alphabetical order, you can nominate someone or just pass. The second time around, you can say the person who you choose out of those nominated, say their name, or you can pass. Okay, so, Mr. Higgins.
Okay. So this will be for a vote for chair, well, actually a nomination first, for chair of school committee. So in alphabetical order. Mrs. Duffy.
Pass.
Mrs. Kane.
Pass.
Mr. Marchesi.
For a nomination, to make a nomination?
Nomination for chair, yes.
Margaret Kane.
Ms. O'Connell.
Pass.
Dr. Quick.
Oh, if it's this Margaret Kane.
Okay. You could also pass because she's already been nominated.
Okay, that's why I was not going to ask.
But that's okay.
Okay.
Not a problem. It's okay. Mr. Veil.
Pass.
Yeah, Mr. Higgins will pass. So now we're going to vote on the nomination of Mrs. Kane. So if you want Mrs. Kane to be chair, you will vote Mrs. Kane. If you wish not to vote, you can vote pass. Okay? So, Mrs. Duffy.
Pass.
Mrs. Kane.
Mrs. Kane.
Mr. Marchesi.
Mrs. Kane.
Ms. O'Connell.
Mrs. Kane.
Dr. Quick.
Mrs. Kane.
Mr. Veil.
Mrs. Kane.
And I also vote Mrs. Kane. Congratulations again, Mrs. Kane, for chair for one more year.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Our second vote would be for vice chairman, Mrs. Duffy.
Ms. O'Connell.
Mr. Higgins.
Pass.
Mrs. Kane, pass. Mr. Marchesi.
Mr. Higgins.
Mr. Higgins, okay. Ms. O'Connell.
Pass.
Pass. Dr. Quick. Mr. Veil.
Pass.
We have two people in nomination. Would both people want to be considered? Mr. Higgins.
I choose not to be considered.
Mr. Higgins, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Ms. O'Connell would choose to be considered.
Yes, please.
Mrs. Duffy.
Ms. O'Connell, yes.
Okay. Mr. Higgins.
Ms. O'Connell.
Okay, Mr. Marchesi.
Ms. O'Connell.
Okay. Ms. O'Connell.
Ms. O'Connell.
Dr. Quick.
I'm Ms. O'Connell.
Mr. Veil.
Ms. Judith O'Connell.
Okay. And Mrs. Kane, Ms. O'Connell. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard here. And our third person would be the secretary, Mrs. Duffy.
Dr. Quick.
Mr. Higgins.
Pass.
Mr. Marchesi.
Dr. Quick.
Okay. Ms. O'Connell.
Pass.
Dr. Quick.
Pass.
Mr. Veil.
Pass.
And Mrs. Kane will pass. So now we would say the name of a person when we come this time. Mrs. Duffy.
Dr. Quick.
Mr. Higgins.
Dr. Quick.
Mr. Marchesi.
Dr. Quick.
Ms. O'Connell.
Dr. Quick.
Dr. Quick.
Dr. Quick.
Mr. Veil.
Dr. Quick.
And Mrs. Kane, Dr. Quick. Congratulations.
Got the pen ready.
Good. We already have something for you to do.
Yeah.
I think we should, we might as well all switch. And I'm thinking that alphabetically, if we start with Mrs. Duffy over there, the whole row goes alphabetically, instead of our alphabet coming this way. So, Ms. O'Connell, if you come here, and then...
You've thought about this a lot.
I just thought about this while I was here. I'm going, wait a minute. When I'm trying to put everybody into alphabetical order earlier. Mr. Veil, you're coming over here. You'll be the next to the last person.
Can I go?
And Dr. Quick, you'd be right here. Now, Mr. Higgins, you're in between, I think. Thank you.
Yeah, I saw him right here.
And Mrs. Duffy there. All right. Oh, right, don't forget, don't forget your name, kids. Now, we all have a different perspective and different point of view. Excellent.
Preserving paper, I guess that's what we had.
All right. Our first items for the agenda tonight would be the approval of items by consensus. There are three items on the consent agenda. Mrs. Benton.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our new school committee members. We're thrilled to have you. The three items on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of April 8th regular session with one change. The evacuation drill of the Woburn Street School is May 19th, not May 9th. Just want to make sure you have that on the record. The April 8th, 2009 executive session minutes not for release. And out-of-state field trip to Quebec City for Wilmington High School request. I recommend favorable motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Oh, Dr. Quick.
A motion to approve the minutes of April 8th, 2009, regular session with the changes Mrs. Benton mentioned. April 8th, 2009, executive session minutes not for release. And the out-of-state high school field trip to Quebec City, October 9th, 2009.
Here, do we have a second? Mr. Higgins. Any questions? Fellows in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous, Trish, except for the two abstentions would be the two new members. Okay. Thank you. Our next item, Student School Committee is not present tonight. This is the off week, the Student School Committee. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Mrs. Benton.
Thank you. I have three items on the superintendent's report, and the first is invited the editor, insistent editors of the Paw Print to be with us this evening along with their faculty advisors, Mrs. Truly and Mr. Mahoney. I'd like to invite the students up to the table. We have Caitlin Kinsella, Amanda Bonnet Kim, and Will McKinnon. And as you can see, they have an example of it for the TV, an outstanding job this year on Paw Print, and they're going to share with us some examples of their experience. And I think I heard maybe a recommendation, so, welcome.
Welcome.
Who's going to go first? Will.
Good evening. My name's Will McKinnon. This is Caitlin Kinsella, the editor of the Paw Print School Newspaper, and Amanda Bonnet Kim, the co-assistant editor of the paper. Over these past two years, Paw Print's newspaper has been a learning experience, but also very fun. As you can see here, we've learned how to lay out the paper, and we've learned all about above the fold, which means it's above the crease. It's normally the most dynamic photo and the most moving story. And it's pretty much the first thing the reader sees, so we've learned to put what we want to be the most important story. Not that the others aren't, but the one that we want to emphasize most. We've learned that before writing, we have to get an interview, and we've learned how to set up a query letter, which is pretty much just how to send a letter to ask someone if we can interview them. We've also learned that you have to be very persistent to get an interview. If you're not, you're probably not going to get the interview. Takes a lot of time, but it's worth it. We've learned how to perform an interview, come up with questions, have them answered during our interview. We've learned about leading lines, the first line of the story, which is pretty much what we use to grab the reader's attention and get them to read on. We've learned about jumps, as you can see here on this example. It pretty much is, you jump from the starting page to another designated page where the story continues. We've learned about standalone pictures, which are kind of difficult because you have to come up with how to explain and convey the message of the story in less than 15 words. That's difficult at times. We've learned that alliterations make great titles. Alliterations are two words that start with the same sound, and those grab the reader's attention and add rhythm. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amanda Bonnet Kim, and as Will said, I'm the other assistant editor. One of the things I want to talk about is the whole editing process, which isn't as easy as a lot of people think it is. We're working with our friends, so we have to go through and take their work and be very critical about it, which isn't always easy. For example, one time, a couple of us were working on this retirement story on Mr. Birmingham, a teacher at the middle school. A few of the lines made it sound like that Mr. Birmingham had died, so we had to go through and fix that. It's not easy, but we have to go through it and get it done. And we have to be critical and sure about our judgment because we learned about 14,000 to 15,000 people read our articles, and that our articles are not only shown in the Wilmington paper, but also in the Tewksbury paper. Another thing we have to talk about when we meet together is who gets to interview who. We've been lucky enough to interview a few people outside of the school, like the radio announcers, Lauren and Wally, and Mary Pratt, who was a professional baseball pitcher for the Women's League in the 1940s. Many people might have gained recognition of this team and how great an impact they had from the movie A League of Their Own. As a matter of fact, next week, a few of us will be going to the State House and interviewing the Lieutenant Governor, Tim Murray, in his office. This has really been a great experience for me, and I think everybody else as well, so thank you. Hi. As Will said, my name is Caitlin Kinsella, and I'm the editor of Paw Print. Right now, I'd like to take time to thank several people who have been an incredible help to keep Paw Print alive this year. Steve Bjork, who is the editor of Wilmington Cryer, has taken time out on Fridays or Thursdays to come and teach the editors how to format the page, which was an extremely amazing experience, which if we weren't on the newspaper, we probably wouldn't have experienced. We'd also like to thank Joanne Benton, who's been supportive the whole process. Without her permission and allowance, we wouldn't be able to create Paw Print. The next person we'd like to thank is Carol Truly, who is a computer literacy teacher at the Wilmington Middle School. She's very encouraging to all the students, and she helps us write when we need help. She's great on the computers, and she's always encouraging us. We'd also like to thank Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Mahoney taught us a writing skill that we wouldn't be able to learn if we didn't go through his class. He taught us how to interview people, and he's taught us the writing style of a newspaper, very valuable lessons that we'll probably always remember. We'd also like to thank the Wilmington Middle School staff, who we've gone to interview over the past two years. We also wanted to propose the idea of continuing the Paw Print next year at the high school with us. Paw Print has become a big part of our life. We've worked on it for two years, and we've been there since the beginning. Two of our student reporters, Amanda and Serena Lolet, actually came up with the title. We were sitting in the auditorium last year, trying to find a creative name that would suit the paper. Paw Print was an alliteration creative, and it was a play on words, so it fit perfectly. We'd also wanted to know if you would support us in bringing it to the high school, and if you couldn't let us know today, if you would contact us in the future. If we continue, we believe we can interview better. We learned how to write query letters, so we think that if we continue writing, our interviews will become better, and our writing style will also improve. We feel in the future that there'll be no one we can't interview. If given the opportunity, we'd love to interview the President of the United States, and we feel we could. If you have any questions or comments, we'd love to hear them, and we wanted to thank you for this opportunity to talk to you tonight.
I thank all of you. I know it's been an incredible opportunity for the three of you, but it also is actually fulfilled, Mr. Mahoney and Mrs. Truly knows this, one of my goals, which was to spread the word of the wonderful things that are happening in the Wilmington public schools, and you certainly have done an outstanding job of it. My husband used to be editor of the high school paper at Winchester, and every time I bring this home, he is just amazed at the quality of the writing. And I am sure that Mr. Tracy, if you make an appointment with Mr. Tracy, the high school principal, he would be more than welcoming of your suggestion to carry this forth to the high school. But great job. I'm really proud of all of you, and really want to acknowledge, they sit in the back, but the two teachers that have really supported the students at the middle school and made this happen, and thank Mrs. Truly and Mr. Mahoney.
Mr. Veil, any comments from the school committee? Mr. Veil.
Is there a cost to the school for this program?
No, there is not. Steve Bjork has really volunteered his time and given us plenty of space in the paper to carry this on. The teachers, instead of getting pay, get credit, credit, as far as every three years, teachers have to get three credits to move on, and we've given them credit, but it doesn't equal the number of hours that they put into the paper. They do it with love.
How many students have taken advantage of this program?
There's 10 people in the staff this year. In the past, last year, we had a seventh and eighth grade, but this year, we're only doing eighth graders.
Okay, so all the editors, assistant editors, and reporters are all eighth graders?
Yeah.
And what would the, is there a process in place for trying to bring this, what approvals would you need to bring this to the high school?
They would need to bring it to before the principal. And Mr. Tracy has extracurricular activity clubs, and this could, they could ask that this be added to the list, and you would find a faculty advisor. And I encourage them to do it.
Thank you. It's impressive, Mr. Veil. Yes, you have a name?
Leslie.
Oh.
I just wanted to commend you. Tremendous, wonderful journalism skills at your age, and I wish you luck. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell.
Just want to add to that as well. I just think it's outstanding. First of all, it's in color. You hit all the key components of marketing and advertising, and I think that just shows the town cryer, obviously, their investment into education. I think, obviously, Mr. Mahoney and Mrs. Truly to be involved, just to even be an educator every day and then go above and beyond and do this, really shows the love for journalism and also for the kids. And I think you can tell tonight that all of you put a lot of thought and effort, not only into the content of what you gave us as a handout, but also being prepared with presenting, dressed very nicely here with full smiles, the pictures here, you know, love your tie with the rubber duck. It just really just exudes, you know, a lot of fun. And I'm particularly impressed, as the editor incoming here, Caitlin, that you tried to close the school committee with a request and an offer for us to expand this. And I think that's great because you need to go for things in life, and you need to ask for what you want because people don't necessarily know what your ideas are. So I give you a lot of credit for coming here, and I'm sure if there's anything that Mrs. Benton can do and the school committee to help bring it to the high school, we would certainly be fully supportive of that. I can't speak for the board, but I'm sure that would be the case. So thank you very, very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veil.
Is there a mechanism for the school committee to take a vote and endorse the program and to recommend that it continue?
We've never done that, actually.
No, it's not available.
No.
They can direct me to talk with the high school principal, which I will do. I will help facilitate a meeting. How's that?
Some of it.
Okay. That'll be great. Thank you. We're really pleased with how well you represent your classmates and represent the town, and the variety of stories that you have. You never run out. These are all different stories here, and you've done a fantastic job, and we're really thrilled. And we thank your advisors, too, for the time that they put in. We'll look forward to seeing it next year at the high school. How's that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
The next item under the superintendent's report is a memo from Dr. McGinn on a Verizon grant that we have applied for, Verizon 2009 Think Ahead with the Thinkfinity Awards. We'll be awarding $150,000 worth of grants to 15 public schools in Massachusetts, and I had asked Dr. McGinn to think of something that would be advantageous to the Wilmington students, and he collaborated with our CARES director, Jean Noonan, and with Jerry Lapoy, our head of elementary reading, and put together a proposal, and he'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the Verizon grant?
We should hear within the next two months. Is that it, Peter?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. One is that the resource Thinkfinity.org may be utilized by parents as well. I think that's a big component. That's excellent to have that. And the second thing in the back, where Ms. Noonan's insistence that the initiative be consistent with the CARES philosophy of providing an environment which promotes a child's physical, intellectual, emotional, and social well-being, avoided making the program just another academic tutorial.
Jean was a stickler.
I think that's fantastic, yeah. That's excellent. Thank you. Oh, Dr. McGinn.
If I may just underscore what you said, that, you know, this is a website that's, you know, public access, and again, as parents, please take a look. It provides resources, kindergarten through grade 12 across all disciplines, so it's really something if you're so inclined to take a look at for your own use with your own children.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you.
And the last item is, was actually a request from Mrs. O'Connell about an update on the drug and alcohol education program, and it certainly is timely today. If anyone was driving by, we had sad students put on the mock crash, and we had, remember our cameraman filming it, prom season, prom this Friday night, and the sad students actually replicate a accident taking place with, unfortunately, one of the drivers being killed, and the mother of the driver participates in the activity, and another student is in the other car, who's a drunk driver, and is arrested, and, actually, I didn't realize it, but taken all the way to the police station and put in jail. The purpose of this, and want to thank the fire chief, and particularly Dan Hurley, who was there all morning setting up, is to get the message across that this is actually a reenactment of something that happened two years ago on 128, and that unfortunately, because student drivers have less experience, that they, you know, unfortunately, the statistics are not good. So that happened today. Friday morning, we actually are having two prisoners who were put into jail because of drunk driving and come speak to the students before they are released in preparation for the prom, because the incidence of alcohol in the high school has, it's not major, but it has increased this year. We've had 15 students who have been suspended because of alcohol use. As you could see, at the middle school level, the incidents have not increased. However, we do need to do more to get the message across. And on last Friday, Deb Deacon, the assistant principal at the high school, had invited me to a meeting with Sheriff DePaul's office and the assistant superintendent of Bill Ricker House of Correction, and a woman from the Counseling and Treatment Center in Lowell to talk about how we can really support our students. If a student gets suspended for alcohol possession, it's eight-day suspension or four-day suspension plus something else, being you can go meet with a counselor or a priest. But we're not finding that to be totally effective. So we had this great brainstorming session, and I'm really excited about this because I'm hoping we can be the leader. We're going to invite 10 surrounding schools, high school principals, to come meet with us about setting up our own program. So for students that are suspended for alcohol possession or drinking, to take the option of the four-day suspension and then the four-day program, we would offer a running program with the nine surrounding community towns around, and actually have a curricula, where we'd have one night, a counselor come in and talk, another night, a health professional talk about the dangers, another night, police officers come in and talk. And we think that instead of students sitting home for the eight days, that this would be more, a better use of their time by educating them on the dangers of drinking and drugs also. So we are going to convene that group the week after graduation. The sheriff's office was very excited about this. We're going to look for some grant money to see if we can concede the grant, but if not, we really want to, are committed to taking the lead in this area. The corrections officer from, superintendent from Bill Ricker, loved the idea because it's being more proactive in turning, using the educational piece of it. Another component would be parent participation. Parents would have to come to two of the classes with their child, so that we can really help everyone understand about the dangers. The high school also put out, and it's on our website, resources for teens and parents. This is, which I will pass out. You had the draft in your packet. The middle school has really, you know, as you could see from Ms. McMiniman's report, a whole section of the health curriculum is related to this issue. I have to, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the work of the DARE program at the elementary level in trying to get students to make healthy choices, and that's what we're hoping to do. But this year, we, you know, athletes unfortunately making bad decisions, and we need to do more, be more proactive in educating students and then helping to support them. So that's where we are at, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, anyone they have.
Anyone have any? Dr. Quick.
I just wanted to make a comment, because as I was reading through this before, about the group outreach at the, well, wouldn't say outreach, but going to the Bill Ricker House of Correction. And it made me think the fact that, you know, when we're, during our younger years, you know, we really metaphorically live in, and we're isolated from a lot of what's going on outside. We think that we're invincible, and we don't know a lot about the dangers. We can hear it, we can hear it in a classroom setting, but I think going to something like this is a great idea because it really, wow, this is reality, and this is what can happen, rather than just hearing it. I really like the idea of them actually being sent to the area to see, and to talk to some of these people, I think, is a tremendous, that's a great thing. It's wonderful. So I just wanted to make that comment.
This will be great. Oh, Mr. Veil.
I have a question. In the memo, it talks about at-risk students.
Yes.
Is there a definition for what an at-risk student is, and how are students determined to be at risk or not at risk?
That's an excellent question. The State Department does the youth at-risk survey, which, in their definition, students who have tried drugs or alcohol, who are having difficulty in school, absenteeism, all combined to, social isolation, all combined for the definition of an at-risk student.
Does that start early on? I mean, are kids identified as potentially at-risk back in?
In elementary school.
In where? Yeah, I mean, how far back?
Yes, absolutely. Nurses can, probably the first ones to identify at-risk students are the students who are repetitive visitors to the nurse's office, and we see them not wanting to go out to recess because they don't want to play with other, you know, have time playing with other children. Those are some examples. And the good news in Wilmington is that the communication throughout is that information is passed on as students transition to different levels.
Passed on, but are the parents engaged? How early are parents engaged in this discussion? And the second part, I mean, maybe not the second part, but while I'm thinking about it, this tour, was that mandatory for at-risk students? Is it elective? Who decides? Who decides? And, you know, list A and list B?
Parents were involved in that, in the at-risk students identified for going on the tour. These are students that have been suspended or have gotten themselves into trouble in the high school years. As far as, I'm sorry.
Part A was, you know, if identifications were made on an ongoing basis, right?
Absolutely. Parents are totally, are notified right away. We need to work with the parents in order to help these students.
Absolutely. And I'm just wondering, and we'll get more into this, but just sort of programmatically, means identification and then obviously ongoing collaboration between the school department and the parents and other professionals, right?
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that it's not just, you know, here's a note that goes home and then categorized, and that's that.
Good point.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
Also reading this, going what Dr. Quick said about the visits to the Correctional Institute, it's phenomenal. What better way to see it? You know, you see, you see these toothless and tattooed-on cops, and you go, oh, that's not me. When you go to Bill Ricker and you see a 19-year-old kid who's clean-cut, good shape, got good grades, and this, they're doing time because they killed somebody in a car accident because they were drinking, or just, you know, or that sweet innocent face and sitting on there doing time. I mean, that's what's going to hit home. That's when they're going to say, wow, this isn't just, this isn't just out there in the slums. This is, this is reality. It happens. The four-days suspension and the four-days with a potential program, it's got my full support. Anything I can do to help make that a reality, I will. You know, short of, also, if we're looking at potential grants or something like that, if they're not available, I'm sure that the local businesses would be more than happy to help kick in if there was anything, any specific cost for programs. We could certainly do some fundraising with local businesses, you know, because everyone else is concerned about our kids. And lastly, the reenactment of the crash. I saw it last year on WCTV. And just watching it from the comfort of my home, watching it on TV, it was mortifying. It chilled me to the bone. It was unbelievable. I mean, the kids did a great job acting, and the silence of the entire senior class sitting on the hill watching it, the silence was deafening. Because you could tell that they were all just, you know, just brought into the moment. So if today was anything like that, I can imagine what it was like. So I think it's a great program. You know, certainly the police department, the fire department, just everyone that helps out, it's just, it's a phenomenal job.
And the car in the front of the high school was the one that was used today. You notice it when you go out, just to remind it to the students.
Yeah, it's very, a very serious event. Friday night's a big night, senior prom. So, you know, have fun, but please be careful.
Thank you. Mrs. Duffy?
No, I just want to echo what Mr. Higgins said, in that the program today, the reenactment, is always very moving. It's very important that our students do participate in the observation of that and understand the value of it. The second thing I wanted to say, I think that being creative and looking outside the box to put programming together for the alcohol and drug, rather than just suspension, is always something good to keep our students involved and active. So I look forward to also seeing the curriculum and seeing that come before this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Duffy. Great. Thank you.
Well, sorry. How much of a distinction is made between substances like tobacco and alcohol, which are basically legal substances, though not legal for people under the age of 16 or 18 or 21, or whatever it may be, and other drugs, both of medically prescribed variety and non-medically prescribed? And are there breakouts as statistics? And how are, are there various punishments for various levels of infractions and possessions? And now, Officer, the state has a new marijuana law. I don't know how that applies to?
That does not affect our, your school policy, which is any drug or alcohol is a suspension. I just, I did not realize that our students that are picked up for drinking are just put into personal, taken into personal custody, they cannot be charged. I didn't realize that. That's, I, only if they're behind a car. So that's what got me thinking about, how do we teach these kids that that's just not right? That you just, you know, don't have your parents come down and pick you up at the police station, and then you're okay. So that's what got me thinking about trying to do some more education. But we have a full curriculum in health teachers that would be happy to share with you the curriculum, if you're interested in seeing it. Happy to share it with you.
Yeah, I guess, just from our policies, I mean, I guess it's.
Policy is any, for the drugs and alcohol, is all drugs that are prescribed. Now, if a student was in possession, they're of aspirin, that would not?
Yeah.
Have a medical reason for carrying a specific drug.
I could suggest, Mr. Vale, too, that you can go on to the website for the high school, and it would have the high school policy. And for the middle school, it'll have those. And then when you get your policy book, I don't know if you've already been given a policy book or not, but.
Euphemistically, you call that a book, right?
Oh, you've gotten it.
You got it.
We got it.
Crate.
The crate. We have.
Did you get the CD version?
I will send it to you electronically.
There you go. That's what you need.
See you.
I got it yesterday. I said, hope I'm not tested. I haven't memorized this yet.
But I'll send it to you after.
You just need to know where to go to get your info. That's it. Thank you, though. Great questions. Okay, Mrs. Benton?
I am recommending that the last day of school be June 15th, with a half-day for students and a full day for staff, barring any unforeseen snowstorms.
Closures are swiped.
Exactly.
Oh, exactly. I entertain a motion that barring any unforeseen no-school days, the last day of school for the 2008, 2009 school year be June 15th, with a half-day for students and a full day for staff. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Higgins?
I move that barring any unforeseen no-school days, the last day of school for the 2008, 2009 school year be June 15th, with a half-day for students and a full day for staff.
Do we have a second? Mrs. O'Connell? All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Next, on the other item, proposed calendar for 2009, 2010, and 2010, 2011. It's the second reading. Hope we can have a recommend approval.
For the new members, we always do this calendar ahead of time so that the basic holidays and days can be filled in. And then, just like we just did, oh, we did before you were here, then we will identify exactly what the school calendar will be before the school year. But this gives working room.
The 2009, 2010 has the release dates on it.
Oh, good, okay. Good. All right, so we'll move, entertain a motion that the proposed calendar for 2009, 2010 school year be approved as presented. Mrs. O'Connell?
I move that the proposed calendar for the 2010, 2011 school year be approved as presented.
Can we do 2009, 2010 first?
Sure. I'm ready to start.
It's the same one, just different year.
They've changed the years.
Oh, that's not a calendar.
This should have been two.
Okay, thank you.
Move that the proposed calendar year for 2009, 2010 school year be approved as presented.
Do you have a second? Second, Dr. Quick? Any comments, questions? Okay, all of them, oh, Mr. Vale.
I'm going to open the can of worms with these. Are there standards or that govern when holidays and vacations are, or either in state law or union contracts or something else? Or can this be changed?
Mrs. Benton?
For Wilmington, the contract does not bar us from starting school before Labor Day. The calendar in Wilmington has started before Labor Day for at least 10 years that I know of. The spring, the vacations, as you know, go back to the time of Fami. Other school districts have, in fact, Stoneham, I know, tried a few years ago to change that because of sports schedules. They did not have any luck. But it is the pleasure of the school committee when vacations are set.
Thank you for that information.
Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, Trish. And the last one, let's, I'll accept a motion for the proposed calendar for 2010, 2011 school year be approved as presented. Dr. Quick?
I move that the proposed calendar for the 2010, 2011 school year be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Higgins? Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Unanimous, Trish. Thank you.
New business, the vote on school choice. Back in 1994, the state legislature enacted the school choice program in which school committees annually vote whether they will allow students from other surrounding communities to attend school. Each year, you must vote on this. My recommendation is that you vote not to participate in the state school choice program because of lack of available space. Right now at the high school, we have teachers sharing classrooms. We don't have the space for more students at this time.
I'd accept a movement, a motion that moves that the Wilmington School Committee vote not to participate in the state school choice program because of a lack of available space to accommodate out-of-town students. Someone like to make that motion. Mr. Makhazy?
Actually, Judy had the hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
That's all right. That's okay.
On the other side.
Reason of five. I move that the Wilmington School Committee vote not to participate in the state school choice program because of a lack of available space to accommodate out-of-town students.
Do we have a second? Mr. Makhazy, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
One of them abstained.
Six, yes, one abstained. Thank you. Our next item of new business is the change to the out-of-district field trip policy.
Mrs. Duffy, a few meetings back, raised, actually raised an excellent question after doing all this research, Mr. Ruggerio and I, and we thank her, whether we go out to bid for overnight field trips. And we had not. So I had spoken with the town manager, who recommended that we hook up with Deb Cipriani, who's in charge of the recreation department, because they do do, go out to bid for all trips. And they shared their process with us and a sample of it, which I put in the packet. And I'm recommending that we adopt the town procedures. I'm not asking for a vote tonight. I'll bring it back at the next meeting, which includes the approval from the superintendent and then putting together bid documents and having the director of administration and finance review the documents, send out to vendors, and then make a recommendation to the superintendent, and we will award the bid. I think it is absolutely prudent with the cost of everything that we probably can get more competitive prices for our students for overnight field trips. And I think it's a great addition to the field trip policy. So I, again, thank Mrs. Duffy and would recommend favorable action at the next meeting on this. I'll be glad to answer questions.
The same one, Mr. Makhazy?
Yes, I think this is a wonderful idea and a great process. The only thing I would recommend adding to the bid documents is some type of cory check for the contractors that are involved, the students. That's the only one thing I didn't notice in the RFP.
That's an excellent recommendation. We have it in our policy, but it's not in the RFP, and we will add it. So thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
It's a great idea. My only question would be, what about last-minute trips? As DECA competition came up pretty quick, and to have to go through this, you know, just as we're thinking about it, we should have some sort of contingency in there somehow for that last-minute stuff.
The policy does.
Oh, does it? As it stands?
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah. I will, I'll put that, the policy in.
I didn't see anything for this one.
I didn't even think of that. That's good.
Okay, Mrs. Duffy?
We have an out-of-state field trip policy. And under that policy, that policy doesn't have to change. We can keep that policy. There's only, probably just have to, as the policy subcommittee gets together, maybe add one sentence. We don't have to add any of this. This is all procedural. It's not under the school committee's purview. It's completely the superintendent's. So we don't even need to review any of this. Also, under the policy and under the state regulations that supersede our policy, we have 30B, which we have to follow. And 30B is your state purchase of goods. Anything over a certain dollar amount, which all of these field trips, because there's large numbers of students going on all of these field trips, these are large dollars, and all of those should be going out to bid. So that's, that supersedes our policy anyway. So the policy subcommittee, just to get together and take a look at the policy we have, probably just need to add one sentence that says something. But this can all go under procedures, which we don't have to approve of anyway.
But I do agree that we need to add a line to the policy around going out to bid, just so that it's made clear.
Yeah, I think we do need to add maybe one sentence in there, but all this is under the superintendent's.
Thank you.
Okay.
In your packet is a report on the status of the FY 2009 budget. Mr. Ruggerio is tracking every penny of expenses we have through the remainder of the year, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Dr. Quick?
Mr. Ruggero, did I say that correctly? Just a quick question about the non-salary area down here. I just, maybe it's my mental fidgeting or screw-up, but it says over-budgeted, but yet we're in a negative?
Over-budget. Just a spending, the spending is just over what we had projected to spend on that line.
Then what's the difference when you say under-budgeted?
Okay, that's a good question. Under-budget, I have to change that, that word. Actually, up on the salary, I have the word, the phrase, under-budgeted. What happened there is when we, when we, when we, when we put the budget together initially, we, there's some positions, some people that retire and so forth. So we project what the salary of replacement may be. And when we hire a replacement, that salary may be higher than what we had assumed. So when I say under-budgeted, that's what I mean, that the amount projected to be spent for that replacement, the actual is a little bit higher than that. So it's under-budgeted. Over-budget, just the line is over-budget. So I'll change that phrase.
This may be too soon to tell, or maybe not. Do you think that we're going to be okay for the year?
Yeah. Superintendent Benton and myself met today, and we continue to meet weekly going over, projecting where we think we might come out. This is a snapshot in time. There are items that are not reflected in here yet. As we remember, last year, we had an electricity issue. There's still bills coming in, so there's an issue there, again, as we had last year. But as we looked at it today, it appears that we should be okay. Probably there's no additional surprises that we're not aware of. I've been trying to track and project out some items, such as electricity, some items that are not yet encumbered, that I knew, that I know we're going to spend. So we spend time, you know, basically weekly, and I spend more than that, just trying to look and to check the spending each day almost.
Okay. The other question, if I could just follow on to that, is if you look down on the non-salary, specifically for special ed, like the 104, almost 105,000, 185, and like 96, do we have any chance of, like, do we have any reimbursement coming towards that?
Not for. Not for, not for transportation, no. The transportation costs have skyrocketed. Last year, we were actually way over-budgeted as well in the transportation of special education students.
She, the, when we prepare our budget and for the 2010 budget, we guesstimate what move-ins we might have or changes in special ed placement. And it is a guess. And this year, we had a new development over on West Street. We had two students move in that required out-of-district placement. We had to pick up the bill on. We had two other students that moved from a less restrictive out-of-district placement to a more restrictive out-of-district placement. And I think, what was it, about $1,000 we were looking at today of new?
Yeah, in total spend.
In total.
Both transportation and tuition, it's almost $400,000.
A cost that, so.
Costed $400,000 more than we anticipated. So we're trying to find places, you know, to cover that.
Right. Because I think, I mean, I think about all of the outstanding effort that the leadership team did and in conjunction with your office to come up with the budget for next year. And obviously, we're going into town meeting. And then you look at, you know, almost four, at least $400,000 worth of additional expenses. So I respectfully say this, do you think we'll be okay with the budget as presented going forward for next year?
The good news is, in the President's stimulus package, we are going to get an increase in IDEA funds. And 50% of those funds will be used for any special ed costs, new special ed costs, and can cover tuitions. In fact, we could, if we feel next week that we are going to be in trouble, which I don't believe we are, we could apply to the state to use some of the IDEA grant money for this year's budget. But we believe that, I'm very confident, we've gone over, we go over it every week and we track every penny, and we know what the expenses are, so I think we'll be okay. But that's, if we did not have the IDEA funds, we would be in big trouble because as part of the state budget situation, we budgeted for a circuit breaker at 65%. And it is, now we're hearing that it has been cut back to 50%. So that's $300,000 that we're going to have to use the IDEA funds for.
As far as, one thing we did do in the budget process this year is some of these items, I did increase the budget amount. For instance, electricity, I bumped it, you know, not quite $100,000 over the previous budget. Some of the tuition, basic, and what we received from our special ed department. But the transportation, I made it closer, more in line with what we've experienced. So could there be overages, Superintendent Benton? Things happen. But we did have to budget some more money to be more realistic of what we've been experiencing. So we did put some additional funds in those particular line items for next year.
Thank you.
And I just want to take this opportunity because, to again, acknowledge the work of Mr. Ruggerio in tracking every penny and every purchase order incumbent. I know everybody, all the principals and central offices probably tied to hearing this, but it's a good thing because he is tracking everything and knows how tight it is. The reports that I receive are tremendous. And so I know what's going on every single week. So we're in good shape. Tight, but good shape.
Mr. Higgins.
A couple things. So just to go by what you were saying earlier, we have appropriated, expended, and encumbered. And so you also keep a column of expected encumbrances, I should say?
Yeah. I have, I won't call it a cheat sheet, but I have a sheet off to the side, if you will, that kind of looks at some things that, you know, may be coming down the road.
Nothing else to do. All right. Also, just for maybe a point of clarification for the new members here or anyone listening to, this little $400,000 surprise in special education money that we, that just came out of nowhere for this school year, that's not a one-time cost. That's going to be recurring costs, year after year. That just came upon us. And should there be anyone, anyone else moving into district next week that has special education needs, that's, that's the kind of surprises we get. We had four at the end of last school year that moved into district that we just, I mean, and there's no way to budget for that. There's no way to guess. So it's, you know, luckily, we do have those funds for next year, just in case. But it's also, I mean, it's a really tough thing. So if you're wondering, how can we not see $400,000 coming? There's no way to see it.
Yeah.
This goes in our favor sometimes, too, right? Because people move out of district or graduate, or, I mean, it's not a static.
With special education, there are so few towns that actually take care of the residents as well as Wilmington takes care of the residents. It's a fantastic town to live in, actually. And the job that everyone does in this town to take care of their special education needs, it's becoming a wanted town to live in. So they're less likely to move out.
We are responsible up until age 22 to pay for the students that stay within the town. It is very fluid. However, there are reports, and I can give you the numbers, our preschool population has increasing numbers, number of more severe disabilities students have. One of the joys of modern medicine is that these children wouldn't have made it 10 years ago and now are, because of early care, are in our schools, but they have more severe needs. So our projection forward in the next six years is you're going to see us coming before you to request another class, preschool class and early elementary class for our students. The problem with the special ed law is that it doesn't cover all the costs. So we don't get any reimbursement for transportation. So, and that is a huge expense to the system. And the, the struggle is that in a $30 million budget, back in October, we knew we were going to be in trouble if we didn't freeze the budget. So we had to make sacrifices in other places. So the $400,000 that went towards special ed came from professional development, curriculum work, workshops, furniture. We had to not do any of the little things that we wanted to do in order to cover those costs. And, you know, it's a nationwide issue about how to, to be fair to the schools in providing Maybe we can have, I'll have Mrs. Potter come to one of our meetings in the fall, the head of special ed, to give a report on the different, I think that would be.
That'd be a good idea. We haven't done that in a while. It'd be great.
This is the, I mean, this is probably the one area that I knew when I signed up for this was going to be a major sort of issue. And it's the one issue that anyone in town has already approached me about, even though I was just elected, you know? And I just, it's also an issue I absolutely know nothing about. So I'm at that dilemma as well.
Okay. We will educate you on it.
Good. Mr. Marchese.
Just to the point to Superintendent, to what Superintendent just said regarding the $400,000, it's not that it was $400,000 of fluff that they were able to cover. They actually took things away and actually tightened their belts so they could, you know, cover these additional costs that they didn't have. So I don't want anyone to assume that the school budget, you know, had an extra $400,000, $500,000 kicking around. That's not the case. They had the money they needed for other things that they completely shelved so they could cover these expenses, so the school budget wouldn't be over-budget. So now that we are going to meet our budget goal. So I just want to be clear on that issue.
I reckon, as in both this town and Lexington, is I have never gone back to town meeting for appropriation on a budget because it's, and I, I hope to keep that record. It's my responsibility.
Exactly. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ruggerio. All right. And our last item under new business is school committee assignments.
I left other dot here. There's going to be two people for that one, so.
We wiped the slate clean here. Mr. Higgins, could I ask you, is the master plan no more? Or is it?
It's, I did make the call because I was asked by a school committee, but there is still a committee.
Oh, okay.
So we should have a representative.
Just haven't had a meeting in a couple of years.
Since you've been on. Did you ever go to one?
No, I never, never had one. I canceled it.
They had, they had two, and they canceled the both last minute.
Did you read their own bylaws? There's something in our town bylaws about that.
Yes. Okay. Let's go down. For the new members, we'll tell you that I know for some people's schedules, some of these would be pretty much impossible to do. However, Policy Subcommittee is one that the two people on the committee would meet with Superintendent Benton and review various policies as they come up. Usually would be later in the day unless two people happen to be home during the day. But that one's kind of a subcommittee that could be flexible, I think. The SIC Bank Subcommittee is totally flexible. You can go early in the morning, well, I shouldn't say, but you can go early in the morning or you can go in the afternoon. You have to meet with members of a union because someone from that union is asking for a use of the SIC Bank. It's infrequent. It's infrequent. I've been on that for the last year and had two, three meetings, three meetings. Technology Task Force, I'm a member right now, but it's, like, the next one is May 7th. It's in the morning, from 9:30 to 11:30, I believe. And I saw that Mr. Vale had technology in his background, but I don't know how flexible you are. It's about three times a year, and it's always in the morning. And I think always a Thursday, it seems.
Yes.
Like a Thursday. Fascinating, fascinating. People from out-of-town, people from in-town and the business, people from all of the leadership team.
And teachers from each building.
Teachers from each building. It really updates on what we're doing with technology. And then Neil comes once, twice, twice a year, actually, and tells us, you know, gives us a report on where he is. School committee representative, the master plan committee, that's a nighttime meeting. Education Foundation, I'm not sure when that meets.
It meets Wednesday mornings, the second, I mean, Tuesday mornings, the second Tuesday month, except for two meetings during the year, which are at night.
And the school committee representative, the school health advisory committee.
That's Wednesday afternoon, four times a year.
And I think that's at 3:30, three or 3:30. Three to four. We'll be coming up soon to negotiations with the teachers' association. We need two little dots there because we would need two people to be on that negotiating subcommittee.
It's usually 4:30 to 7:30.
4:30 to 7:30, okay. Food service has been right after, people have been able to meet at 3:00 to 3:30. That's usually right after school for them. And the nurse subcommittee, we'd need one more person. I'm presently on that. And we'd need one more person there.
Is food service up?
But I didn't think food service was up. So can we take it off?
Take that off.
Okay. All right. So those are, so what we could do is, if anyone sees something they'd really like to do, it would be helpful. Dr. Quick.
I'd be happy to stand, the Wilmington Education Foundation.
Great.
And the school health advisory.
Dr. Quick, since we're in that mode, is there a possibility that you join the nurses' negotiation?
Yes, I will do that.
Work that out. Was anyone else wanting to be on that negotiation? Going to fight over this. Ms. Turner, I'm sorry, had you hand up?
Yeah.
Mrs. Duffy.
I'd like the Policy Subcommittee to stick with that. I can also do the SIC Bank.
Oh, great. Thank you. Mr. Vale, just hand up. Yep.
Yep. Seems I've been encouraged to do technology. I guess I could do technology.
Can we send, I'll have Mr. Ellis, would you have Mr. Ellis send him the information? Because maybe you could make this one, it'll be the last one for the year. I believe it's May 7th.
I'll have to check. But, yeah, I mean, my schedule's, like, it's both very packed, but I also control it. But I'm also interested in policy.
Oh, great. Okay. Mr. Vale, excellent. So, Ms. Duffy teaches, so she's home later in the day, but like 3:30 or so in that area. Are you able to make meetings ahead early?
Yeah. And I just, as long as I, as long as I can plan, as long as I can plan.
You wouldn't mind if you had to go.
If things don't come up a week, you know, if I'm a month or two out.
We'll meet right before, we do the hour before school committee, too.
Yeah, it's very flexible.
Right. So.
Excellent. All right. That'd be great.
Yeah, the thing I really can't do is schedule things quickly.
Okay. All right. Ms. O'Connell will do SIC Bank. Excellent. Oh, Mr. Marchese.
I'll, I'll take the master plan committee.
Oh, all right. Great.
They probably have four meetings this time, right?
I know. Sorry, Mr. Higgins. Too much. I cannot believe this. There's no subcommittee for me.
Teaching negotiations, you can't bring in.
I know it. That's the biggie. If no one wants to volunteer tonight for teaching negotiations, can you seriously think about it? I'm the only person who, I'm sorry, I can't be on that committee. And 4:30 to 7:30, we're not sure exactly. We haven't had, have we had a request to open negotiations yet?
No.
We haven't had a request yet to open negotiations, so, but when that comes up, we'll definitely need two people for that, that committee.
How many days during the week, just once? How intense does it get?
It usually is once a week.
Stop it, Judy, stop it.
Give them whatever they want, you know.
Okay. He's not all right.
He just recused himself.
I just made lots of friends and recused myself at the same time.
Exactly.
We do, one of the ground rules is, is you make three dates ahead because it's so hard to schedule.
That's almost all of the negotiations. We try to make three days ahead, three, three times ahead, yeah.
I'll talk to you offline about that. I would, just to talk to you about.
I wouldn't put myself in print. Okay. All right. We'll think about that. It's coming up, but it's not here, so.
We don't have any dates.
No, it's.
How many people can meet there?
Two. You need to.
I'll talk to you.
All right. Excellent. Very nice. Okay. Delegations.
Do you got one? Anything to add?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. All right. Oh, I'll repeat them. Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Duffy, Mr. Vale. SIC Bank Subcommittee, Mrs. Duffy, Ms. O'Connell. Technology Task Force, Mr. Vale. School Committee Rep to Master Plan Committee, Mr. Marchese. School Committee Rep to Ed Foundation Board of Directors, Dr. Quick. School Committee Representative to School Health Advisory Committee, Dr. Quick. And Negotiations Subcommittee, Mrs. Kane and Dr. Quick.
For nurses.
Nurses, excuse me. Negotiations Subcommittee for nurses. Mrs. Kane, Dr. Quick. Okay. Did I go too fast as you get it? And we put on hold the Negotiations Subcommittee for the teachers. We'll have everything else. Excellent. No delegations?
Okay.
All right. Board members, questions and comments? Mrs. Duffy.
Boy, here is coming to a close so fast. I hope to see everybody at town meeting on Saturday. The only, I have one question through the chair to the superintendent in regards to, I heard from a constituent this week in regards to school commit, an email to the school committee. And she said that she had spoken to our technology person and that there was a spot made available on our website for email to the school committee. And my question then is, where are those going? Are those going to our secretary as correspondence? Are we, will we be getting those in our packet? Because it was.
One came in, it was sent to Mrs. Kane. I sent it to the chair. I mean, Neil sent it to the chair.
Okay. So then, Mrs. Kane, when do we?
Completely, we'll get, I'll, sorry.
That's all right. It was probably that one. Maybe there'd be more, as people know that that is now available on the website for them to send us questions and comments or. them to send us questions and comments, or.
There was that only one, and I'm sorry, but I had pneumonia during that time. And I completely, I apologize, it's my fault.
She didn't tell me when it was, but she said, have you, you know, did you get my info? And I'm like, no, I didn't get you, so I figured it might come through.
And then I put it away, so what I'll do is, I'll mail it out to you, I'll forward it to you.
It'll go in our packets? You can just go in the packets.
We'll put it in packets, okay, we'll pull it, and it'll go in the packet.
But we might want to consider a process.
I will do that, right.
For those emails, because, you know, some may be correspondence-related, others may not, it just may be a comment just for us to have as information, so we may want to just take a look at.
Well, let's look at this one, and then see where we think we would have put it, and then, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do that.
And that's all from me this evening, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Higgins?
I, I think I've said all I had to say tonight.
Okay, Mr. Marchese?
Just, it's a pleasure to be here, and I'm looking forward to a good three years.
Great, thank you. Ms. O'Connell?
I just wanted to, went to the technology fair at the middle school in the afternoon. I thought it was outstanding. I thought the business involvement and the kids being engaged was just outstanding. I, I stayed longer than I thought I would, because I was really interested in what they were doing, wanted to welcome the new members to the board, and also, with the prom coming up this weekend, be smart, be safe, have fun, get out on the dance floor and shake what your mama gave you, type of thing, and looking forward to a great year with our new committee. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Quick?
I just also wanted to thank you very much for helping us out over the next few years, and same goes for the senior prom this weekend. It's an enjoyable time of, it's an enjoyable time, enjoy it, and again, be safe.
Okay, thank you. And Mrs., Mr. Vale?
A pleasure to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with you all and getting to know the school district better.
Great, and I want to thank the new members, congratulate them, and thank you to those few people who got out to vote. I don't, I think when you see the paper tomorrow, you're going to see that, granted, people were unopposed, but you just wish that people, when you see other countries and what they're going through, you just wish people would exercise their right to vote. But in any case, we have two great new members, so that's excellent. Yes, Mrs. Benton?
Can I just take a moment to remind the public that on our website, we do have the latest information for the, from CDC on the swine flu, and that there is a phone number, a 211 phone number, that anyone can call if they have any questions. I want to commend the nurses in the school system, who've been doing an incredible job over the past couple of days about making sure that, following up on any calls we've gotten, our concerns, and, and acknowledge the cooperation of the Board of Health, and working with Shelley Newhouse as well on communication. I did do a connect that out to everyone, our parents, this afternoon, telling them where they could find the latest information, and just want to, again, acknowledge Doreen Crowe, because on Monday, I called her in the morning to say, what do we need to do? And we got something out right away, and we got an email, I got an email through the superintendent network, saying, has anybody done anything? And I was pleased to have emailed back and said, I did it. And John Dioria from Canton called me and said, how did you do this so quickly? I said, we were on top of it, but, he said, can I use the same, we forwarded us the materials to put on our website, so I want to acknowledge the great work, and just tell everyone to be alert, and we do not have any known cases or even suspicion of cases, but we are reminding everyone, as always, to wash hands and proper hygiene, so, thank you.
Good, thank you. Correspondence, no. Future meeting dates and agenda items, I'd remind everybody about town meeting, and hopefully we'll see people there at 10:30. Definitely, we need a quorum to get started. And our next meeting after that will be May 13th at 7:00 PM, and then May 27th, regular meeting at 7:00 PM. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Higgins?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Ms. O'Connell, all those in favor? Unanimous, Trish, thank you. Good night, everyone.